While Christian sets up.
I'll sit.
Okay. I'd like to invite anyone that wants to address the school committee on the public participation to come forward, identify yourself. Seeing none, being none, we'll move on.
No, I have.
Oh, Rhonda.
Sorry.
Okay, I didn't see you.
No, no, I didn't raise my hand.
Okay.
Good evening, committee. I'm here speaking as a parent and as a supporter of Invest in Wareham. I stand, I don't stand, I sit.
You sit.
To address the audience of some opportunities to be able to learn more about Invest in Wareham and the support for the override vote that is going to be on June 17th. Tomorrow, Thursday, June 5th, in the Board of Selectmen room, our town administrator and our superintendent, as well as members of the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the FINCOM will be at the Board of Selectmen room to present the information on the override as well as answer questions. The meeting will begin at 5:30, and I encourage all citizens to be there. If you are not able to attend tomorrow night's meeting on the 5th, then there will also be a second open forum on Thursday, the 12th, at 5:30 PM. It will be held in the middle school auditorium where we are right now. Again, these two public forums are an opportunity to be able to ask questions directly of our town administrator, our superintendent, as well as different boards in our town regarding their support for the override, as well as how we got to that point. So again, I encourage folks to attend both of those. All information is located on investinwareham.com. You can find information there, as well as sign up, and you can ask your questions directly there, and they will be answered in a timely fashion. So I thank you for your time tonight, and vote June 17th.
Right. And we thank you for your efforts, Mrs. Vugan. Anything else to be said on public hearing, or public information, public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on. Good news, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you very much. While we're setting up for the video, I would like to share that we have appointed a principal of DECAS. Her name is Mrs. Donna Noonan. She will be joining us July 1st. She comes from Falmouth, and she's a principal in Falmouth and has been for seven or eight years. So we're welcome, we will be welcoming her on July 1st. And now we're ready for our video.
Hi, my name is Sarah Lynn. My favorite memory from Wareham High School would probably be the javelin club. You had to do so much hands-on work, and it's all on the students. They learned so much together, and it was great experience.
My freshman year winning the conference championship.
This guy Tom Redd.
I'm cheering at the Mexico games with my friends.
Tennis!
My favorite memories from Wareham are playing sports because I made the best friendships with some of these wonderful people around here, so yeah.
Hi, I'm Matt.
I'm Maddie.
And I'm Lys.
And our favorite memory is mornings to a man who was so annoying.
Drinking our coffee.
Drinking our coffee.
Yep, she became our best friend over the last three years, and she's our advisor.
My favorite personal memory is UJ.
I remember the very high-quality education of the school, very kind teachers, and this one time when with my sorority class, we went up to try and run off by these turtle legs.
My best memory of high school was probably taking art classes because it taught me that I could do a lot more than I thought I could, and I'll be at a college. So thanks, Miss Dion, and best.
The times when I realized I became really close to the humans now in all of my life.
That concludes my good news.
Well, that's great. It was really well done. Very good. And I look forward to graduation Friday night. It'll be, I figured it out today, my 49th graduation, so I think that that is pretty good, and I'm still able to make it. So does anyone else have any good news that they'd like to share with the committee? Mr. Lazarus?
Well, today, I know we're not dressed as we were earlier today, but Mr. Palladino and I cooked hamburgers and hot dogs for the senior class for the annual class cookout, which is held usually on Wednesdays just before graduation. We had, I would say, about 90 percent of the class there. They seemed to have a good time.
Very good. Anyone else? Seeing, yeah, go ahead.
Always just a little bit too late, sorry. We're gonna have the PTA up in a little bit to talk a little bit about that, the great organization and what they do within our schools, but I was personally, I benefited personally where, just this past week, where my son went on his second-grade field trip to the Zeta Tarian Theater to see Charlotte's Web. Again, it's 100 percent paid for by the PTA. They had an amazing time. It's a great experience, and usually he comes home and I say, "How was school?" "Fine." This, I, there, it lasted an hour. So it's just a great experience that our kids are exposed to because of the PTA and the different field trips that they do for them, so thank you.
Very good. Anyone else have good news at this point in time? Well, I just have one quick. It's not related to the school committee, but it's related to the school committee member, and I'm really, really happy to see that Mrs. Vugan returned safely from her race, and she's still not wearing her life preserver, so congratulations.
Thank you, very, very much.
What?
What?
She didn't, she was out on her sailboat and did not wear her life jacket?
No, not wearing it currently, today. She took, finally took it off.
Thank you very much for coming back here.
You're very welcome. Congratulations. All right, at this particular point in time, I'd like to approve the minutes, 1st of May 15th, which was our workshop meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 5-0-0. And now I'd like to approve the minutes of May 21. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented on May 21. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing, a hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 5-0-0. The next order of business is to discuss the school committee calendar and schedule. So you've got in front of you a draft, and I have something to say on it, but I'll listen to anyone else at this point in time. Any comment or discussion on the meeting dates?
I just, just want to make sure that this is consistent with meeting the deadline of the town administrator.
I can't respond to that.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay, good, thank you.
I have one thing. I was gonna bring it up under new business, but I think I have to bring it up now. As you know, one of the primary functions of the school committee is to evaluate the superintendent. And that evaluation, we have to submit and complete that evaluation by October, and the evaluation is gonna be done in public session. We can't do anything in executive session, and I just, I've said before, this is the only public official where their evaluation is done publicly. I can't think of another public official, including, you know, town government or anyone else, that has to have their evaluation done in public. But be that as it may, we have to do everything in public. So that being said, we are, this year, the first committee to use the new evaluation instrument. None of us have used it before. And so I honestly feel that we really ought to have a discussion relative to, you know, how we want to proceed as a committee, how we want to use a new instrument, if there's anything in the, in the new instrument that is ambiguous, because before you know it, we're gonna be feet-first, knee-deep into the evaluation of the superintendent. So with that being said, I guess I'm saying too much, but with that being said, I honestly feel that a meeting in July might be in order just to focus in on the evaluation process and using the new evaluation instrument for the superintendent before we actually get into the process. Certainly, I'm not gonna force a July meeting on you, but I think that it might, it might be a good thing to do, and I was kinda looking at July 9th, but I don't know what your vacation schedules were or anything else, and certainly we can put anything else on the agenda that needs to be discussed, but I honestly feel that we need to have a meeting, and it doesn't have to be July, it could be any time. We have to have a meeting to kinda get ourselves acclimated to this new evaluation instrument. So I'll entertain any discussion or what they have on that, but my, my initial thought would be a meeting in July.
So I'm fine, I, I can do a meeting in July. Does it, does it need to affect this vote, or could it, we could just add on a workshop?
We could add on a workshop, or it could be just a regular meeting in case you wanted to add something else to the agenda. I, it doesn't matter to me, whether it be a workshop or whether it be a regular meeting. I think you have a little bit more flexibility if it's a regular meeting with just several items on the agenda, but it doesn't matter to me.
Well, I apologize, I left my packet at work. But, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no, there's no meeting at all right now in July, right?
No.
And I always thought that was weird.
Wow.
So I mean, I'd be fine with just having a real meeting anytime in July, just to be having one.
I was kinda looking at July 9th.
Yeah. And not a workshop, but a real scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, just for whatever might be going on.
July 9th works.
July 9th works? July 9th works? It does? All right, so can we add that? Well, I'll have to have a, I guess we don't need a motion. Can we just add a meeting on July 9th and, and make sure that that gets published? With the primary agenda item being using the new evaluation instrument on the superintendent. Okay? Oh, that's good. All right, so now I need a motion. Do I need a motion to approve these dates? I think we do. I'll entertain a motion.
As amended, right?
As amended. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, as amended, the meeting dates for 2014, 2015. Is there any more discussion to be had on the issue?
Just one question.
Mrs. Vugan?
To the superintendent, the all-day budget workshop, that is the one that is going to be the, the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen will be invited to those, and it's the all-day budget workshop where the principals and administrators will present their budgets.
Correct, that's on December 18th.
Great, I appreciate you adding that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just checked my calendar. I have a mask board meeting on July 9th at 6 o'clock.
Oh, shoot. Okay. All right.
I don't have many conflicts, but that's.
Well?
So Mel asked about the 10th, which is the next day.
10th is fine.
It's a Thursday, right?
Yes.
Um, that, no, I don't think so. I'm involved in that celebration Wareham, and it's a big event on the 10th.
So do we need this for this, or can we just add on a meeting so then we don't prolong this discussion?
Oh, I know. Well, we could, but how about?
Because then we can do it offline.
Right. How about Tuesday the 8th?
Yes.
Tuesday the 8th.
That's fine.
We're gonna have one anyway, so what difference does it make?
That's fine.
Tuesday the 8th. Gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have a motion and a second on the floor to approve as amended.
To approve as amended, July 8th.
Are we switching now?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, approved. So the minute, minute, meeting dates for 2014 and 2015 are approved. It's, you know, I mean, it's not casting granite, if something comes up, we can, we can deal with it. Presentation by PTA groups. Are we ready to go, folks?
We would just like to ask the presidents of the PTA to come down and just share some of your events that you have put on for our schools, how you've helped our students. We so much appreciate all that you've done, and we just want to recognize all your hard work. Mrs. Holbrook, Mrs. Leonardo, and Mrs. Maslone, right? Mazzoli.
Whose son just got hurt at this last week's parent-student game, and the parents didn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Nicole Mazzoli, I'm the president of the DECAS West PTA. This year, we started off our year by restructuring a little bit. We had gone by item budget, and this year we decided to change and go with a grade-level funding budget. The purpose for it was that we wanted to hear from teachers as to what was needed in the classroom and kinda work, have a, start an open working relationship with the teachers. It worked out very well. We were able to put $2,500 per grade level, that's K through fourth, into their hands. Some of the things that they purchased, I'm sorry, were kindergartners were able to buy the big listening centers that they need that have all the headsets, it helps with their reading programs that they have. Each classroom got one. We put some NOCs into the first-grade classroom. Each class, which there's five, got two NOCs each. Let's see, second grade, we put some doc cameras, some assorted materials. Third grade, we did five projectors for the reach program that they have for reading. Fourth grade, let's see, there was, they're doing a lot of end-of-year stuff, which I think is really cool, because, you know, fourth graders are excited to go on to the middle school. They're doing a slideshow of DVDs. I'm not sure what that is. I don't know if they have, like, events or whatever. I know they're gonna have a moving up ceremony, they're gonna have a cookout, they're gonna do some really fun stuff at the end of the year that they're gonna be using for. They also used it for field trips, busing, which this year was very affordable, so thank you very much. We were able to do a lot in the classrooms because of that. So we really did like the grade-level funding this year. We had teachers come and tell us, you know, they had to request it, it had to be approved through administration, it had to be approved by all the teachers. It took away a lot of kinda nitpicking, and this is what we want, and this, and money going to different areas that I felt weren't beneficial to the classrooms. So this was a model that I took from another PTA, and this year it worked phenomenal, and we're actually thinking about putting it on for the new PTA for next year of also doing grade-level fundraising from.
K through fourth.
Pre-K through fourth for the upcoming year. That was really the exciting news. I mean, it was very, very successful this year. We also didn't, we finished the playground, so a lot of that went back into the classrooms now this year. Everybody seemed, I didn't have a lot of complaints on it. We had a great year. We had a lot of parent participation this year. We put out at the beginning of the year a volunteer form to all parents. We made a DECAS directory so that kids could reach out to other kids and make good relationships and friendships in the community. We asked parents to volunteer for all our different fundraisers. For every fundraiser, we had a good 20 people that volunteered that we could call on, so it was a great way to open communication with teachers, parents, and kids to have great community in DECAS, so this year was great for us.
Very good.
Hi, my name is Janet Leonardo. I am the president of the PTA for Minnet in East Elementary. We focused more this year on in-school enrichment and field trips for the schools. As Mrs. Vugan said, we send all of our grades to K through fourth on a field trip. A couple of the grades picked the High Line crew, so they got the tour of the canal on the Viking. A couple of them went to the Heritage Museum and Sandwich, and a couple of them, one of them, excuse me, went to the Plymouth Plantation. And again, it's completely 100 percent paid by the PTA. We always thank the parents, because if it wasn't for the parents purchasing our fundraiser items, then we wouldn't have this. Our preschool, which is a little bit more difficult, we can't send them on field trips, and we can't have some of the, like, the Chuck E. Cheese come in, because the kids are afraid of them. So this year, we actually hosted a family fun day for them, and it was just held this past week, and there was six different stations. The kids got to come out with their class, their parents got to attend, and they did, we had a petting zoo, we had a moonwalk, we had a craft, a bubble station, an obstacle course. So by the time the kids left, they were hot, sweaty, tired, filthy, and it was great fun, I'm told, that was had by all. So our, our PTA, again, is a little bit different, where we focused mainly on sending the kids on the field trips. We also were able to purchase the scholastic newsletters for the kindergarten classes. Each one of them had their whole year paid for. And I also purchased books for every single one of the classrooms, for the teachers' libraries within their classrooms, and then we also purchased books for our reading and math programs, which all of the students that participate receive a book once they complete a section of that program. We do award ceremonies, they do, we give certificates for everybody that participated, and it's fun, because the teachers get competitive, and they really encourage their children to read, because they know that they're gonna get the ice cream party at the end of the year. Something new that we're doing this year for our fourth graders is we are having an ice cream social, where the students will be, all fourth grades will go to the cafeteria and have an ice cream social, and be able to mingle with their friends and get their yearbook signed and take pictures, and one of the teachers is actually hoping to put together a musical picture DVD to be playing while the kids are all doing that. So that's something different, and the teachers are really excited, and we're really looking forward to doing that. So that's our year in a nutshell.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I would like to call down two other members of our PTA, because they should be recognized too. Come on, Chris, you want that?
I just wanna sit here. Thanks.
And only because middle school and high school is a little different than DECAS and Minnet and the elementary schools, there's not much parent participation at the middle school, high school level. As a matter of fact, there wasn't a high school PTA until two years ago, when we took them on. Fundraising at our level is very difficult. I would say the fall fundraiser is our biggest. We come into the year in debt every year, because we pay for half the bill for the agenda books that every student in the middle school gets. So that's a $3,000 amount that we have to carry over every year, and we've done that for the last six years, well, as long as I've been around. We also pay for the eighth-grade promotion ceremony. They all get a class picture that's laminated, and they can keep it. We've done that every year. That's about $1,500 usually. High school, we're very happy to have the high school. We wish we had more parent participation at the high school. However, we're very happy that we have taken on the high school. This year, we were able to give some of the teachers mini-grants. I believe Tom Tricca got a GoPro for his class. A couple of them used the money towards field trips. Reptile, reptile show came in, which is great. It was really great to write those checks to the high school teachers, because they work really hard. Not that all the teachers don't, but they all do.
Do you recall, Mr. Palladino, how many you had, what, five, six?
Six grants.
Grants, yeah.
At least four of them for field trips.
Right.
And then the GoPro and the reptile.
And it was the band, right? I believe we did something for, for the band uniforms. Something for DECA. Yeah.
At the middle school, we do our annual spaghetti dinner, which is basically, it's not a fundraiser, I don't want to say that, because it's more of a PR thing, that the, we don't make any money off of it, but it brings the incoming students, the fourth graders now, to get a good look at the school for the first time, and Student Council, I believe, gives them the tours of the school, and it's a spaghetti dinner, it's $5 a person. And every teacher in all the schools, if you are a teacher, you are, you get in, we don't charge you, or your family. So that's every March.
Oh, Rachel's challenge, yeah.
This year was a big year. In the six years that I have been president of the PTA, Sarah, you've been with me five.
Yes.
We have brought Rachel's Challenge to the schools twice. Three years ago, and then this year, September, we brought them again, and that's a huge expense. And then the Scotty Montero Junior Foundation has done the workshops the last two years, which I highly recommend if anybody wants to do that workshop next year, if they do it, take the day off, it's amazing. What else do we do?
We did those, the two fundraisers, the comedy shows.
Yeah.
Appreciation.
Oh, we do a teacher appreciation lunch for, not the high school teachers and the middle school teachers, and we even include the cooperative school, because they don't have a PTA there, so we kinda just have the lunch delivered between two days to all three schools.
We do stuff for the secretaries, the custodians, we've done stuff in the past.
Usually, we pay for buses for field trips, however, fundraising has been really tough the last couple of years, so if there's any parents watching, the fall fundraiser, if there is a PTA next year, because we're not quite sure there will be a PTA at the middle school, high school level, we have not, this is my last year, actually Monday night was my last meeting, and I know that's, I shouldn't smile, but it's six long years, that's a long time, but there is no president. Nobody has come up to volunteer to be president. It would be very sad. They have, somebody has till June 30th to volunteer, otherwise there will be no PTA. We do have other offices, and actually, this is the first year we actually have fundraiser people, so that's a good thing. What else do we do?
That's okay.
But usually, we do buses. Usually, every year, the seventh graders in the middle school go to Gillette to do this workshop that they have there. We always pay for the buses for that. We usually contribute to the buses for mo, for most of the other grades for the field trips, but this year, we spent most of the money on Rachel's Challenge, so we were a little low on our budget.
Right. And I think Rachel's Challenge is probably one of, if not the best thing that Chris has fought for and to bring into the schools, and from what my daughter has said from being there, it's, it's allowed a lot of kids to be able to open up, say what they need to say, get things off their chest, and look around and realize that, you know, I'm not the only one having the same problem, whether, whatever it is that they're going through at home or in school. So I definitely feel that if we can bring that every other, every other year, or every year, however, we can bring that in and have it funded, I think it's a beneficiary, beneficial to all of the children from middle school up into high school. It really is.
That's what we do.
In a nutshell.
Okay. I, I can speak for the committee, I'm sure, but the committee can speak for itself, but you, the PTAs are, are connecting link to the community and the parents and the families in Wareham, and it ties those families, and it ties our, our community at large with the school community, and it is so important. And I, for one, and I'm sure I can speak for the committee, appreciate everything that you do, but it saddens me that you're, almost all of you have said that you really wish you had some more participation, and you need more, more people to be involved in the PTAs, or the PTOs, rather. So anyways, not to belabor the point, but I really, really can't thank you enough for what you do, and I wanted the young folks to know how dedicated many of you are in terms of providing for them also. So I, I just can't thank you enough, and if there's anything I can do to get folks involved, I will do it, and, but, you know, you're kinda the unsung heroes, and I really, really appreciate, and I know I speak for the committee, everything that you do. So I'll personally say thank you, on behalf of the children of Wareham, and also the administration and the school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, go ahead.
And I have a gift for the three presidents of the PTAs on behalf of the school committee to say thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
At this time, I know it's a little.
Do we have questions?
Will they take questions?
Oh, sure. Don't leave yet, there might be some questions.
Okay.
Mrs. Vugan, you had a question?
Sure.
Okay.
Hello. Thank you very much. Chris, I just want to start off by saying that six years absolutely has your dedication over the last six years. over the last six years and everything that you've put into the PTA, you need to know how much that is appreciated, appreciated. And I, I wish you, um, lots of fun with your family and your free time, um, but I also do think that that gives us an opportunity to get you involved in other ways. But now, you always have an opportunity to say no, and we appreciate that too, but I just, it's important to recognize Six Years PTA President, um, difficult times at some point, and that you just keep plugging through and keep bringing great, great, um, programs to Wareham. So, and also the rest of, um, the team that, that has been with her all that long, so thank you.
Thank you.
The, the couple of questions that I have, um, have to go along with what the, our chair is saying, um, which is around how to get, uh, more help. Because when I've gone to the PTAs, I do see the same, it, it's the same folks that are working tirelessly over and over again. So how can we bring, um, additional, uh, folks to the table to help out? So, one of the questions is, do you know the percentage of the, um, parents to teachers that, that are involved in PTA? Do you know the overall, I mean, would you say it's under 25%?
For my PTA, I can say that I probably have, um, about the same teacher. One of the biggest issues that we have for our school is, we moved our meeting times to 4:30 in the afternoon because we used to do them at seven, and the teachers, it's a long day for them, they didn't wanna go home and come back. So we tried the 4:30, which ga, got us more teachers, but then we lost parents because the parents don't get out of work until five. So that has been one of our, um, biggest issues, is trying to find a time that works for everybody. Um, I will say, on a side note, one of the things that I find brings people to our meetings is food, when we say we're gonna have food, and/or if we do a door prize.
Great. So, the other PTAs, but just, I mean-
Well, first of all, I don't always agree math, but I had to do percentages.
I'm sorry!
I, I would say that we have more parents than teachers, but we do, the teachers that come are very invested. I, you know, I, I don't wanna say anything against them. So ours is actually at 6:30 at nighttime, so it is a long day for them to stay. And, um, the ones that are local will be able to come back. And, and we, on occasion, when they've been called to come, they will come, we will have somebody from each grade come and represent, um, to tell about, you know, maybe new stuff that's happened and, but we have a great parent, um, group that comes. And, and this year, one of the things that we really strived for this year was to not overload one person with everything. So that was where, um, we did, we did, we did it. I think we had, at the last year, at the end of last year, what we did was, we picked our fundraisers and we said, "That's a great idea, you're the chairperson, okay, that's a great idea." So, we had chairpeople set up, and then the executive board just supported them in what they did. So, and we asked, that, that volunteer list, when they volunteered, we called them and asked.
And Chris, you had said that, that there's a low percentage also, and I think that's what I was getting to, is, is what, what are the challenges for, whatever you've heard of the challenges from either teachers or parents are the reason why they can't? Timing is one.
Well, our meetings are at 7 o'clock at night, so, um, however, I think by the time that people get to middle school, high school, they're tired, they're burned out. Um, the teachers, they do so much extra at the middle school, high school level with clubs and sports and whatever, so we don't get a lot of teachers. I'm gonna say we have two teachers, maybe three, that show up all the time, um, to every meeting. And we have less than 10 people in a room at every meeting.
I know that there's probably other questions, but just the one, what, if, if you could choose one thing where, um, the principal or central administration could do to help within your PTA, what would it be?
My, 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 I would like more help with the fundraising, just pushing the fundraising, getting the teachers excited about the fundraising, so that we can raise the money to do these things for the kids.
So the communication around the fundraising.
Things go out.
Yeah. We've been told, and, and I know this is awful, but we've been told that teachers don't even hand them out sometimes.
Okay. All right, but just better communication.
And that's, I mean, we're working, doing that. So if the teachers would work with us to do that, and a lot of them do, and I'm not saying that, but, um, it's hard, you know? It's, it, they're, it's a long day, they're hard, it's one more thing on the first day of school to hand out.
No, but that's just-
But it's important for us to help the kids.
Yeah.
Or just, you know, maybe just getting, um, the word out, exactly what we do with the money, so that they know exactly if they're buying something in the fall fundraiser, what we have done, like this meeting here, if anybody's watching, they will know what we have done with the money that they have purchased, so that they know. And I don't think a lot of the parents maybe know exactly what they're, you know, what they're getting.
We didn't know until Monday night whether every student at the middle school next year would get an agenda book. And they will be next year. I cannot guarantee the year after that.
Okay, I, I gotta move on to other people on the committee.
No, I appreciate it, I'll come to the meetings and we'll keep talking about this. Thanks.
Hi, welcome. Um, I confess total ignorance with respect to your annual budget. What, what does it look like, and therefore, correspondingly, what is the fundraising goal for the typical PTA in Wareham? I mean, what are you trying to raise? And I'm wondering if that goal is part of the reason people don't wanna show up because they're scared they're gonna get asked to, you know, help raise all that money. So, the first number I'd like to know is, at each of your respective PTAs, if someone handed you a check for X, how much would it have to be to satisfy your fundraising goal for the entire year?
For the Minnetonka PTA, we, when we sit down in the summer, we go over our budget, our expenses, our free family events that we have that don't generate income, and then our fundraisers. So ideally, for us, we would like to have, you know, we have, you're supposed to have a reserve of half of your expenses. So for instance, our operating expenses are around $3,000. So right off the bat, we have to make at least $1,500 in fundraisers to cover that expense. This year, our enrichment budget was $12,500, and that was for in-school enrichment and field trips.
So you, you spent $12,500?
We have not spent it yet.
But you expect, over the calendar year, to spend $12,500?
Yes.
Is that similar for the, the other two PTAs? No.
I would do a happy dance if I had $12,500.
That might be worth the price of admission, but anyway.
No, not even close.
Not even close.
We don't even, we don't, we are committed to the agenda books and the eighth grade picture. After that, we play it by ear, because we can't guarantee we'll raise the money. Rachel's Challenge took us two years to raise the money the first time, but that was for the high school and the middle school, so that was a double whammy. And then this year, we raised the money last year and carried it over for this program this year. So we were under budget when we started.
About the same, $12,000?
I, I would say for us, we're, we're about the same, but I wouldn't put a limit on it, I'd say right about-
No. You want to hand me a check, we'll take anything.
Very smart, yes.
But, I, we didn't, our expenses for the new PTA that we just moved, I don't, I don't know the one right now, is about $6,000, and that takes care of the enrichment programs and things like that. So, that's what we have to, to make, and then after that, it all goes into the classroom. So there isn't really like, do you know what I mean? There, there isn't like, we have to have this. It's, the more you participate, the more your children get into their classrooms.
And I, I understand that. And the, the second question, and I'm, I'm almost done, um, is related to Rachel's Challenge. I've participated at least twice in Rachel's Challenge, and I, I agree, it's an extraordinary program. What does it cost?
The first time, we paid for it for the middle school and the high school, it cost $8,000. In the fall, we paid $4,000.
For both the middle school and the high school?
The, everyone at the high school had already seen the program, so we had decided that we would let that go. We had the community night, which flyers didn't go out, so it was unattended, basically. Um, but, um, everyone in the middle school saw it that, this year.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the, the, the thing that happens in the gymnasium.
Oh, so you're talking about the workshops at the Scotty Montero Foundation?
Sorry, yes, you had, you didn't pay for that.
No, we paid for the presentation in the fall.
Got it, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, thank you very much.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yes.
Real quick, I promise. One of the things, I've been on the PTA for five years, president as the last two, and one of the biggest things I find with parents is they're afraid to join the PTA because they feel if they can't commit 110% of their time, then it's not worth joining.
That's a very good point.
And what I always say to parents is, if you can give me 15 minutes, that's 15 minutes less that I don't have to do it and I can be with my family. So, we have a lot of things that we can do to give volunteers that they can do at home. We have a lot of stay-at-home moms, they can count box tops for us, they can count labels for us. So there are, there's many different things that volunteers can do, whether they can take on the roles that we do where we give 150% of our time, or they can only do something once a month at home. So, just ask. I ask you, just ask, you know, if there's something, we will definitely take your help and it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you very, very much.
I think that's a great marketing campaign that Jamie should tackle, which is, just give us 15 minutes, PTA.
That's all we want.
Yeah.
Can we put our faces on there with a sad face?
Yes.
At this particular time, I'd like to do something that's a little unorthodox. Just don't leave yet, okay? I'm, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, so you can come up and have some cookies. These cookies were for you, you know? And, uh, we're gonna take a five or a six-minute recess, 'cause I think the school committee would like to meet you guys, all right? So, can we be in recess and turn the cameras off for about five, five or eight minutes?
You're in charge.
Thank you. We are now in recess. And I'd like to continue on with the agenda items. And next on the agenda, uh, is the appointment of a school nurse. And we don't appoint many people, but the school nurse is one of them. So, um, you have a recommendation, Madam Superintendent?
I do, thank you. Um, in accordance with Chapter 71, Section 53, the school committee appoints the school nurse. I'm recommending the appointment of Linda DeVoe as a part-time Point Four School Nurse for the remainder of this school year. She has been serving in this position as a long-term sub while-
What school?
High school.
High school.
While obtaining her Massachusetts license as a school nurse. She holds a master's degree in nursing from the University of Massachusetts, Dartmouth, and a bachelor's degree from John Hopkins University. So I'd ask the committee to please appoint Ms. DeVoe as the Point Four School Nurse at the high school.
How do you spell that name?
D-E-V-E-A-U.
Oh, okay. Uh, do I have a motion to appoint Ms. DeVoe as the, um, part-time school nurse at the high school?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any other debate?
I don't, I don't recall previous appointments of school nurses by this committee.
Mr. Swett.
And I'm sure it's one of the most critical things that we do as part of our responsibilities. And, and I'm sure the superintendent is clearly incapable of doing it without our approval.
Absolutely.
But I, my question is, there are other school nurses in our system, correct?
True.
Are these appointments lifetime appointments? Are they annual appointments? How long are these appointments?
It's like a teacher.
Yeah, once, it's a one-time appointment. You wouldn't have to redo them every year as long as that person holds the position.
Okay, so that's why we haven't faced it before. Okay, thank you very much.
Good question.
Who, Jeff?
Ken.
Who?
Me.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Uh, we have now to vote on obsolete equipment. Madam Superintendent, Michael?
Mr. McMillan.
Mr. McMillan?
Good evening. Today, I'd be able to get your approval to dispose of this obsolete equipment today. However, I, I, as, as I've looked into it further, under the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, in order to dispose of property under $10,000, we have to have a policy in place, and at the moment, there isn't a policy in place. So, this item now really just serves as notice that we'll be coming back at a meeting in near future with a policy for disposal of obsolete equipment. So, and, once we get that in place with your approval, first order of business of that will be to dispose of the equipment, which you have already seen. So, apologies for wasting your time, but, eh, it will be coming back shortly.
Any questions for Mr. McMillan? Mr. Flaherty?
Along the same lines as what Mr. Swett just said, I, I don't recall us ever having to authorize disposal of equipment, have we?
Yeah, we've done that before.
Okay. Yeah, so if it has to wait, it has to wait.
Yeah. So I think in the past, eh, there is other ways you can dispose of the equipment. So if you think there is a worth, a resale, you can, with the school committee's approval, put it out for a request for proposals for people that wanna take that off of your hands. But given the nature of this equipment, a lot of it is very old, it doesn't work, we don't think we'd be able to sell it. I mean, so we'd rather just get this, we'd rather do this properly, get school committee's approval to dispose of it and do it that way.
Mrs. Vugan?
It's all technology.
Yes.
It's all computers, it's printers, things like that. Um, when taking a look at some of the equipment, I mean, we heard from some of the custodial staff that some of the equipment that they're using, I know that they keep fixing it, but that there are, are those items also that would need to come to this committee? Or is it pretty much just technology?
Yeah, so, you know, there is a bit of a project in improving, you know, keeping our schools as clean and a pleasant environment, and part of that is removing some of the clutter, and we've been encouraging schools to do that, and this is a, this is one way that we can get rid of some of that clutter. So, the first step has been technology, 'cause I know walking around schools, you see a lot of, especially in the technology offices, a lot of unused and unusable equipment. So that was a priority to get rid of that equipment. Eh, but, you know, we're also looking at textbooks, and we've got a company to come out and assess textbook, eh, textbooks that we don't use anymore to see if they'll take them off our hands. So that's tomorrow, so there's lots of, eh, different things that we're looking at, replacing, removing if we can't use them.
Okay.
But obviously, we have to be, we have to be able to replace them if they're still working before we can remove them. So, hopefully, we'll come to that, the equipment you mentioned, soon. But this stuff's literally, it's not even being used at the moment, it's really just clutter and dust.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swett?
Is there a dollar threshold after which the town administrator also, or the Board of Selectment have to get involved? For example, it comes to mind, buses. If we wanna dispose of, of an obsolete bus, this committee does not have the authority to do it without the approval of the town, correct?
Yes.
So, is, what is the distinction?
Sorry.
Well, you're probably about to answer, what's the distinction between those two situations?
Probably none, that. And also, the, the town technically owns those buses, so we'd need to get their agreement to dispose of them.
So the ownership of this obsolete quip-
Yeah.
-equipment is legally-
With the schools.
With the school district, but the town legally owns the buses.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? I want to take a motion to approve the disposal of the items as, as, uh-
Do we-
Presented.
No, I think we need to hold until there's a policy, I think that's-
So we will come back.
Oh, you're all right, okay, that's right, that, all right, I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate that.
So no, no action?
No action.
All right, very good. Uh, let's move on. Financial reports, Mr. McMillan?
Good evening, school committee. Good evening, School Committee. I'm a, so we've got the May financial reports, these came a little late, just because the month only ended on Sunday, so we just had to get the reports out before we head of this meeting. You know, as you can see, we're getting down to near the end of the year. It's not, it's not quite as low as you might expect, because we still have the, eh, five summer checks for staff, so that's a big wad of, eh, that's a big, large chunk of expenditure, which we still have coming, but in most budgets, we're getting close to the end of the year. I do, I did submit some requests for transfers, and, I don't know if you wanna address them now, is that possible? Is that, yeah, is that, so-
I'll just ask for general questions.
Okay.
Uh, any, any questions? Mr. Swett?
As usual, one of my favorite topics is transportation. It appears that the operating budget is going to be approximately sufficient for Mr. Tatro's needs. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Is, so, yeah, so the, the LEA budget, the budget summary here-
Yes.
So we had hoped there would be a bit of a surplus left, but there has been, you know, as we've gone through this, the latter part of the year, with a lot of, with a lot of additional requirements for busing for homeless students, and, eh, for district placements, so we've, so that's eroded some of the surplus we thought we would have, but we will still cover our costs.
And when I looked, I know I'm jumping ahead, but when I looked at the revolver, there were very, there was almost no withdrawals from the revolver, which means the operating budget has stood on its own.
I mean, eh, so, the revolver has covered its costs where it's, you know, paid, it does pay salaries, so that salaries has come out of that where necessary for-
For revolver activities.
Revolver activities, exactly, and the LEA has, this budget has covered this.
And yet it's-
So it has stood on its own, yes.
And yet it still looks like it's going to have a, a net gain, recognizing there was some already in there, a net gain of 220,000, something like that.
In the revolver?
Yeah.
In the revolver, well, there is that money which we had allocated for buses that we were not able to use.
Right, so it's still there?
Yes.
So it's still there?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I mean, then, the fund, the pricing, or the fees for transportation when we do eh, outside regular bus runs, is structured such that we have some money coming into the revolving account to pay for repairs and additional buses, if that ever becomes possible.
Right, I, I realize that accounting is not ever gonna be perfect.
No.
But there's an attempt made to allocate appropriate expenses for the revenue generated.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so, so if we, so if we add the McKinney-Vento money into the revolver, we're only short, I shouldn't say only, 100,000 or so, so that we can consistently put about 400,000 into new buses on an annual basis. And of course, the more we do that, the lower our operating expenses will be.
Well, yeah, exactly. Although, we didn't buy, we haven't bought any buses for more than a year, so we have now-
I understand.
So effectively, we've almost got two years' worth of, eh, savings for new buses now reflected in the, so really, it's more like 200,000 rather than 400,000.
Well, I can wait for the revolver when we get to the revolver. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Flaherty?
Again, I apologize, I don't have my packet in front of me, and I'm having some issues with the email, and, so if, if, if Ms. Shaverhood has already answered this, maybe she already has. But, um, last, last school committee meeting, we had a discussion about the deficit of about 140,000 dollars in the school lunch program, uh, from FY11 being carried over to this year. And I was curious, which line item would that be coming out of in the budget this year?
So, we have already paid, eh, for that, we've already paid that deficit out of this budget, and that's partly reflected in some of the transfers that were now necessary to do, because we had to find that money from, we were also, well, we were, so we were able to find some of that money, we were able to allocate some of that money from, we were able to move some expenditure that we had planned out into, against school choice, and use some of those funds that have freed up. But so, also, effectively, sorry, these transfers effectively helped to cover that.
Alright, but, so, you, you can show me later, I guess, where, where the transfers came from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, hopefully, the, that's the paper I sent around earlier in the week.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, just for clarification, though, is it an accurate statement that there is in fact no line item for food services in the LEA budget?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's where I was going, I mean, if it's been transferred, then, then I wanna see the, the transfer, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this doesn't, these transfers that we've requested don't address that issue specifically, because that happened earlier in the year, and I can bring that information back at a future meeting, or by correspondence.
Correspondence should be fine.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions on the financial reports?
On all of them?
No, on this one.
Oh.
Just the budget summary. Seeing none, let's move on.
So as, so linked to that, I had circulated a request for transfers, so can we, can I run through those now?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this is a, I was requesting four transfers between these functions in line with the budget policy. The first one is to transfer 300,000 dollars from the program with schools and other public programs with schools, other than public schools, to teacher classrooms. And eh, that's to cover, eh, that is partly, there's an overspending teacher salaries caused by the impact of the, the overspending FY13 and the reduction in the school choice entitlement.
Now, let's take them one at a time. No questions? Let's move on.
So, sorry. Programs with schools other than public schools?
Yes.
How does the money get into that account?
That is, this is, so this is money that we budgeted for, this is out of district costs, which are not, which we no longer, eh, which is, has effectively over-budgeted, because we were able to make some pre-pays last year.
Yeah.
So there is now a surplus in that account, or there will be at the end of the year.
So will this catch up to us? Because I know some of the grants that we receive, that there's a two-year cycle with them.
That's, yeah, circuit breaker, there's a, I think that might be-
Is circuit breaker included in this, or no, that's separate?
It's not, because, so that does, that, so we receive circuit breaker, which has to be spent on out-of-district costs.
Yeah.
So that will be spent on out-of-district costs.
Okay.
But that, the money we receive through circuit breaker is not sufficient to pay for all of our district costs, which is why we have a substantial amount of money that comes out of our general budget, also to pay for out-of-district costs. And in FY13, and for this year, we slightly over-budgeted, well, the budget was actually pretty close to being correct, but we hadn't been able to make pre-pays just at the end of last year for some of the summer programs that came out of the FY13 budget.
Okay.
So that may have left a slight surplus-
So it inflates this year's line item?
Leaves a surplus in this year's budget, which we are now able to transfer across to pay for the deficit in teachers.
Okay. Mr. Flaherty?
Yeah, again, I was just handed this, I'm, I was looking at the first item, the amount to transfer from the 9300 account, it says, the amount to transfer is 300,000 dollars, but the current balance is 256,000 dollars and change. It is not even enough to cover it, right?
Or is that the balance after the transfer?
No, you're right, that's the, that's the balance before the transfer, but there's a-
There's gonna be more in the account.
There's some, no, there's some, eh, outstanding purchase orders, which we do, we are, we will be able to cancel, because we don't have to be made at the start of the year, which we will to cancel, which will free up some money.
So there is more money there, it's just not reflected.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Alright.
Any other questions on this line item? And we're not gonna go back to it. Alright, next line item, go ahead.
Do you wanna vote on each one?
Um, we can, yeah, sure. All in favor of-
Do we need a motion?
We need a, I'm gonna ask for a motion. Do I have a motion for all in favor of, um, the recommendation of Mr. McMillan to transfer out of the 9300 account, 300,000 dollars?
Some moved.
To the, to the 2305 account?
To the 2305 account.
Second.
Motion second. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Next line item.
So this is to move, eh, 72,000 out of maintenance of equipment, eh, which is 4230 to utility services 4130. So utility services is currently in deficit, and this will be net required to cover that deficit and remaining payments. So the, and the deficit here relates to the high electricity costs we experienced in FY14, partly because we get our, we came to the end of a contract just at the time that electricity costs were going up, just in, during the winter, and so that inflated our costs for the year.
Any discussion on this line item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to transfer out of the 4230 account 72,000 dollars into the 4130 account.
Some moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Next line item.
This is to move 30,000 from medical and therapeutic services, eh, current balance is 150,000, to legal settlements, where we had unexpected legal costs this year.
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Swett?
Revenue associated with medical and therapeutic services, is there any?
No, not at the moment. I mean, there is-
There is, it just doesn't come to us, correct?
Whether, I mean, not, I mean, what do you, what do you have in mind? There is, we do receive tuition-
Medicaid.
Oh, Medicaid, yes. No, we do not, Medicaid does not come to us.
But in fact, that, that revenue does come-
Into the town, yes.
Into the town. Can you tell me approximately how much that is?
No, I-
Ballpark?
I'll get it for you, I don't want to-
I think it's six figures.
Yeah.
Oh, it is six figures.
Yeah, it is.
Maybe multiple six figures. Okay.
And that doesn't come back to us, but it's, it's directly related to the school department.
We provide the service, and the revenue goes, okay, thank you.
Alright. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to transfer from the 2320 account 30, uh, 30,000 dollars into the 1435 account.
Some moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Next line item.
The last one is 12,553 dollars from professional development system course reimbursements to professional development substitutes, which is currently in deficit of 12,553 dollars.
Both related to professional development?
Yes, exactly.
Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Mrs. Veugan?
How are, I mean, there, we've overspent in professional development? How is it approved? I mean, how can we go over in that account, there's an approval process before people can take advantage of professional development, correct?
Yes, so, there was the greater demand for professional development, it was approved by Director Kirkland, Superintendent myself.
Okay. That's all?
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Swett?
I have to ask a follow-up question.
I just said, no, sorry, go ahead.
We've got a budget. Someone is being asked to approve it. They can see there's no money in the account. At what point does someone pause before they approve?
So the budget is the money that was allocated in FY13 for that expenditure, but it's possible-
FY13?
Well, it was, in FY13, the budget was created for FY14. So, where priorities change, that is why then subsequently transfers are required to reflect those new priorities. Does that make sense? So, yes, it is important that we stick to our overall budget and, and individual budgets, but it is also possible that priorities will change, and as long as we're able to find that, you know, ensure that that money is available, and get an agreement.
And priorities changing within broad accounts is something this committee has said is within the purview of the superintendent.
Yes.
But, but that's assuming that the money is going to be found within those broad accounts. As soon as someone, the superintendent, someone realizes that money isn't gonna be available within the broad account, then, if it's already been approved, it's essentially saying, "School committee, approve it, because I've already done it." You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I have, I have a problem with the fact that the priorities have been reprioritized even be, outside the major account, even before it gets to the school committee. Now, frankly, the amount we're talking about is a very small amount. So I'm really talking more the principle than I am the amount. Am I making sense?
Yeah.
And I don't actually even need a response. Thank you.
Well, I think that, you know, as we get, as we, we set up our goals in, uh, professional development programs, things do change. You, you may get more people involved in it than you thought you were gonna involve. Um, you, you get all kinds of training, and there may be more people involved in the training that you thought were gonna be involved in the training. There's a whole lot of reasons why an account could go into deficit. But what I have to do is, I have to have faith in the administration, that they also can see a line item, that at some point in time, they're gonna come to the school committee and say, you know, "I've got a related line item, that if worse comes to worse, I can ask for a transfer," and that's exactly what they've done here. So, you know, even though I don't like to see it go in a neg, in, in a negative, I can understand reasons why we would, given the way things change in the course of the year, and, and the way people sign up for PD, and, you know, whatever the, whatever the priorities are. So, I, I think it has to be somewhat fluid, but I, I really do think that we need to keep an eye on, on the ball, and, and not to go into negative whenever we can, but I, you know, I, I can understand, you know, why it happens from time to time. Mr. Flaherty?
Um, to Mr. Swett's point, I mean, normally, I would be the first one to jump all over this. Alright, I mean, no, no, normally I would. But I think frankly, it's kinda working as it was intended, after we redid the whole, the, the budget policy on, on requesting transfers and such. Like I said, it's a little amount. We put in speed bumps, pretty much, I, I thought, to have them come to the committee when they needed to go, when they need to reprioritize. And I think that's what's going on here, that's what, that's my, that's how I infer it. And I, I'm, I'm okay with it, I, I respect, you know, your objection. But, um, normally, I would be the first one to do that, but, but I, I'm, I'm okay with this, because you, you are, you're coming to us. We're dealing, we're dealing with it now, in, in June, not, not, you know, in August, when we're closing the LEA, which is what, which is, which is what happened in the past, when we get this, and we'd be like, where'd all these negative numbers come from? What happened here? So it's actually being dealt with now, versus later.
Anything else to be said? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to transfer from account 2350, 12, 12,000 to 553 dollars to account number 2355.
Some moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Next order of business, Mr. McMillan?
So I also circulated a paper with a summary of the revolving accounts to May 2014. They are, there's not, I mean, there's not any huge stories since our last report, which was just a couple of weeks ago, so I'll just open for questions.
Any questions on the revolving account?
Just a follow-up on-
Mr. Swett?
So we've got, we started with 66. Now, that 66 is less than the 150 that we were going to spend.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Because we used it for some other very valuable educational purpose?
Yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, right, but, but the key, key number to me is the difference between 66,000 and 282,000, and the fact that we have made 5,000 in payments, outstanding POs, 600 dollars. So, we truly have a net, um, increase of about 220,000 dollars, and the year isn't quite over.
Yeah.
This does not show, or maybe it does in a way that I'm, I forget how it might be, outstanding receivables. Is there a receivable associated with this two hundred and eighty-two dollars, or is this a cash, is this cash accounting?
This is entirety of, yeah, there's no receiv- there's no.
There's no accrual?
No, yeah, there's no accrual.
And there's, so there are no receivables? Well, there's no receivables indicated in this number.
Exactly.
But there are receivables in a literal sense of the word that Mr. Tatro hasn't been paid yet by some vendor.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Right. And that's not indicated anywhere here.
Exactly.
Okay. Any idea how much that is on a rolling basis?
No, I mean, it's not, I mean, you mean payment for services?
Yeah.
In other words, what's outstanding to come in?
Yeah, there's a, I don't know, I don't have the number off the top of my head. I can find out for you. Some of the transfers internally, you know, because there are transfers going on internally between transport direct, transport department and, say, the athletics department and so on, and there are.
It's not that important, but the, the point I'm trying to make is irrespective of what didn't happen last year that we wanted to happen.
Yes.
I.e., buy two or three new buses. The net impact of the revolver was a positive two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And it hasn't supported the LEA's line item, the net, non-net transportation number.
Exactly.
That's, that's a positive.
Yes.
And I think we need to be advocating seriously to use that for new buses, because that's going to hold the expenses of the transportation operating budget down. Otherwise, it's just going to start to go back more and more, which we know it did in the past.
Exactly.
I've used up enough time. Thank you, Mr. Sherr.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, um, then I, we don't need a motion on that. Just move on. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Does that conclude your report?
That does indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this particular time, I'd like to call on the superintendent. I know we got an email today to give us some background on this and, and how she wants to proceed on the background check policy.
What I would like to suggest to the committee would be for Mr. Flaherty and myself to meet and anybody else that would be, as long as it's not more than three of you.
Well, Mr. Swett is the, the current chair, but Mr. Flaherty was the chair originally.
Great. So, if the two of us, the three of us could meet, look at this policy on fingerprinting and background checks, then what we would like to do is to draw up a synopsis of a suggested policy for you, because if you look at this, it's, it's really quite in-depth. And we have some sample from other districts that would, if we would mirror, would meet our needs, and it would save a considerable amount of time, committee time, if we would be allowed that flexibility to do that.
I don't have a problem with that. Sure. Mrs. Vugan?
No, I think that the policy is long overdue to really take a fresh look at it and take a look at what the, um, the new information is out there. The concern, in addition to the policy, the policy is one, but I don't think that I would feel comfortable voting on any policy if it did not, in this case, include the procedures around the quarry. There are, um, I'd like to, so I'd like to ask that during this process, that when this is presented, that there's a quarry policy and also the procedures. And what I mean by the procedures are things like, um, you know, one of the concerns is that how often do we do quarry checks? Is it one and done? Or, you know, is the standard out there doing it every two years? I'd love to see it every year, but I know that's a huge expense to the district. But what is the standard nationwide when it comes to how often we need to do quarry checks? So, that's one. I think that's not so much a policy, that's a procedure. The second one.
Well, it could be written into the policy, though, in terms of how often we do it.
And they can decide on whether that's part of the policy or the procedure. The second part of the procedure.
Because I don't want to see procedures in the policy manual.
Nope, that, either do I. So, there's a policy, but again, I think that in this case, it's important to attach for review the procedures because they go hand in hand in this policy. The second kind of bucket has to do with the procedure between central administration, where they're, where they're done, and how that information is shared, not the actual results of the quarry, um, but staff that are quarried with building, with building principals or building, uh, the secretaries, the people that are, you know, first at the door, as well as, uh, busing, whatever it is. The reason why is because there are multiple people that come into our building on a daily basis um, that are volunteers, that absolutely should have a valid quarry check. But what is going on at the building level when that person comes in? Are they confident that that person has a valid quarry check? So, I want to see that as part of the procedure also. What is the connect between central administration when it's done and what the communication is, um, at the building level, as well as what the procedure is in the building on how they go about checking to make sure that our children are safe? Those are two high-level examples. Um, I'm sure that as we get down into it, there's more procedures around that. But that, to me, is as important as the actual policy, and so I would love to be able to see that, please.
Thank you. Any other, uh, discussion? Okay, uh, so, we don't really need a motion on this. It's just, you're going to meet with these two gentlemen and you're going to come up with something and bring it back to us. Thank you. All right, um, now we've got my favorite discussion, high-stakes testing. Can we vote not to do it at all?
Some moves. Is there a second? We have a second.
We have a student representative who wants to be able to graduate.
Yeah, I know. Mrs. Rotella, you're going to make this presentation?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Blow my mind.
Well, the superintendent asked if I would present a succinct, immediate, and presentation this evening on the attributes of PARK or MCAS. We don't have a choice as a school district not to do standardized testing, but the Commissioner of Education has deferred the decision on which test to use to school districts. And as you saw in your packet, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has decided that it should come before the school committees. So, thus, at the superintendent's request, I am here this evening. As you know, we did a trial run of PARK online at the high school this spring, and we did paper testing in the pilot at the middle school. For the fourteen-fifteen school year, we need to decide, the district needs to decide, thus, the school committee needs to decide if the school district will continue with MCAS next year, with PARK next year, or with some version of both of them next year. So, I have taken this stack of documents that is sitting next to me and distilled it to seven slides. And we'll go through this, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. One of the things that you need to know right up front is that although the choice is ours, is the district's, MCAS will continue to be the competency determination for Massachusetts high school graduates through the class of two thousand and eighteen. That's the freshman class coming in next year. That means no matter what is decided here tonight, all students at Wareham High School, beginning with the incoming freshman class through their graduation, will need to pass MCAS in mathematics, English Language Arts, and Science, Engineering, and Technology. That given, moving on to what is the difference between, between PARK and MCAS, very simply stated, the Department of Education has said that PARK, being aligned to the two thousand and eleven Common Core state standards, is co- is assessing college and career readiness, whereas MCAS only assessed high school graduation standard, not whether or not students were college-ready. And I'm sure you've all seen the multiple articles that have been published, about forty percent of the students who enter college need to take remedial classes. So, PARK is, in essence, moving towards college credit level work. Simply as a comparison between the two, as I said, the district can, has a buffet of choices, and that's how it was described when I was on the phone with the Department of Ed today, is this is not a full-course dinner, this is à la carte. So, and that's their words, not mine, so you get to pick which dishes you want. As a district.
Spare me.
The school committee can choose PARK for all students in grades three through eight and grades nine and eleven, completely eliminating MCAS. Remember, tenth graders still need to take the competency determination tests, so that's aside. If PARK is chosen, all of the students who take PARK actually take two sets of tests. They take the performance-based assessment, or what some of us as educators have called authentic assessment. It's, it's a presentation or written assignment, performance-based in the curriculum. They would take that in the early spring, March, and then in May, take an end-of-the-year assessment that is an end-of-course assessment. If PARK is chosen for grades nine and eleven, or grade nine, or grade eleven, that's a separate decision from what will be chosen for grades three through eight. And then it separates again, if the high school chooses to go ahead with PARK, whether they will do all students in grade nine and all students in grade eleven, or one or the other. And whether they'll do ELA and math, or ELA or math. So, there's a series of decisions here to be made. At the elementary and middle level, it is more straightforward. It's either all MCAS or all PARK across the district. And it cannot be separated out. If it is PARK, the only decision left to be made is whether students in grade eight will take PARK at grade-eight mathematics test or high school Algebra I. That's a separate decision. Regardless of the decision on MCAS or PARK, fifth and eighth graders will continue to take the MCAS in Science, Technology, and Engineering. High school considerations. Again, it's all separated out. The mathematics assessments are end-of-course tests, if they're available. PARK hasn't completed them yet, and Desi isn't sure they'll have the funds to purchase them. Wait, I've tried this now. Grade eleven ELA is ready and available, and that is what was piloted. And the state is saying, or the Commonwealth is saying through the Department of Ed, that students who pass grade eleven PARK in ELA will be able to take credit-bearing courses in all state colleges. PARK at the elementary and middle level, then it is up to the district to decide by school whether to do computer-based or paper-based. In other words, it could be one school does it on paper, one school does it on computers. It doesn't have to be all or nothing. And it goes on through the details of what kind of technology is necessary, and all of this will be presented in training sessions over the summer. The, just for your information, PARK and MCAS administration dates are similar and will be in the school calendar. All special education accommodations are similar across both assessments. Again, as I said, some institutes are available to support the PARK assessments, including sample questions and tutorials for both teachers and students. We have already given some of those sample questions to our teachers during one of the in-service days. What happens with PARK and accountability, CPI and student growth percentiles? The Department of Ed has stated in a number of documents and assured me verbally today that they are contracting with statisticians to find a representative sample to link PARK results to MCAS results for both achievement and growth, as well as CPI cut scores. And it's, regardless of the formula that they create, there will be a hold harmless agreement. In other words, a school or a district cannot drop levels of accountability because of PARK. So, there will be no changes in the levels. They are just going to come up with this formula. The recommendations at this time, our superintendent has asked principals in a recent administrative meeting what their recommendations were, as principals have had access to all of these documents. And the recommendation from Wareham High School, and Mr. Palladino is here with us tonight, is that PARK be administered at the high school. It is yet to be determined whether it would be grades nine and/or eleven, whether it would be a sampling of students in nine or eleven, and whether it would be ELA or math. But the high school would like to at least start having students assessed at the more rigorous level that is aligned with the Common Core state standards. The middle school principals felt with reconfiguration and with new administration at both elementary and middle that they would stay with MCAS this year until they have, the dust settles both on the new faculties, everything is aligned and updated with PARK or Common Core state standards. Remember, these standards were released in spring of two thousand and eleven. They were not distributed until March and April. So, the last two years have been spent, last two school years, in aligning our programs, aligning teachers' instruction with the standards. And the elementary and middle school principals felt one more year was to their advantage. Those are the recommendations coming from the administration. There is more information. You all have a copy of this presentation. And I have included in your copies these links so that if you would like to read more of this maze of decisions, it is there at your disposal. And I am available to answer any questions, and I'd ask Mr. Palladino to join me if he would.
Well, before we get into questions, um, just, um, well, we can get into questions. Mr. Palladino, um, is there anything you want to add before we start asking questions?
No, we're just, as Gina said, we're still, um, trying to figure things out as far as do we do ninth grade and eleventh grade, just eleventh grade, just ninth grade, so there's still a lot of work to be done. But certainly, um, there is a, a timeline of June thirtieth as well, where we have to send in our decision as a district.
But it's non-binding. I think it's important to underscore that, and I know it's a parenthetical phrase on the slide, but the decision that the superintendent sends in this month is non-binding. All it does is it gives our district access to PARK. And then by October, the final decision can be made, once we know what tests are truly available.
Okay. From the committee or student representative, any discussion, any feedback, any thoughts? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I have a comment and a question. I took the PARK field exam for English this year, and I felt that it was much more difficult than MCAS. As you said, it's more of a college and career readiness test. And my entire education, I feel, has almost been aimed at passing MCAS, a lot of it, anyway. So, that's why I've done so well in it, I think. And when I took the PARK field exam test, I didn't feel I was prepared in the same way, for obvious reasons, it's a new test. But, um, if we were to go in the direction of PARK, I'd like to hope that the same preparation that has been given for MCAS will be given at the same level, if not more, because it's such a harder test, so that students can succeed. And then the question I have is, um, logistic- logistically speaking, when we did the, the field test, I know we had enough technology for that, but if we had the entire eleventh grade, the entire ninth grade, both grades taking it the same day, are we going to be able to have the technology to do that?
I think Michael can, can probably answer that, but we, we know that's, that's an issue, and the recommendations are one device or computer for every student in your largest class is like optimal recommendations. So, Michael?
So, eh, we've been working, we've been, I've been working with, eh, Mr. Palladino and the Ms. Rotello and the technology team to look at what our options are. One of the things that we believe is that, eh, and this is also working with people at PARK, is that we're hoping we'll be able to use Chromebooks for, you know, able to do PARK testing, but they're still finessing, I mean, I'm not sure if they're quite there. They're still finessing some of the software that you have to use, but provided that, and they, but they have said we would use Chromebooks, and they're obviously a very inefficient solution, eh, sorry, not inefficient, inexpensive solution, eh, to this challenge. So, that's where, that's the direction we're going in at the moment. Yeah, so there you go. So, yeah, then Mr. Palladino has just shown me that the most recent guidance shows that they will support Chromebooks, and they, they prove, they've proven very versatile and very effective in this, eh, for our technology team.
Thank you. So, more about the comment I had before. I, in, in the field test, anyway, I don't think I did even half as well as I did on MCAS. And like I said, that's because I was guided in the direction of MCAS. So, is there, is there discussion or even plans to do the same with, with PARK? Would we have to, I think personally, there would need to be a shift in focus in the curriculum and how we prepare for everything, because it's such, it's such a difficult test, and for me, it was, anyway.
It is much more difficult, and the test is not assessing knowledge in the sense that you're reading a passage and simply commenting or critiquing or analyzing that particular passage. The questions are more in-depth, they're more across multiple texts, uh, much more geared on informational texts and real-world problems. So, it is a completely different focus and shift in mindset. Uh, a lot of work has been done with department chairs. Both Mr. Palladino, I, and Mrs. Freitas have been working with department chairs. I know in particular that, uh, Mr. Murray and Mrs. Marshall have been working with their departments. Mr. Murray, this year, has piloted a district-determined measure that is modeled after PARK's uh, performance-based assessment. It's a multi-stepped writing assessment. So, the work has been. So the work has begun with the teachers and that is why the first teachers we gave the Park sample questions to were our elementary teachers so they could experience the rigor for themselves. Uh, so you're absolutely right. It is not only more rigorous, but it is a different type of instruction. It's completely different in that it is not about delivering a set of facts, figures and content concepts. It is about teaching children and students to think, to analyze and to critique. So you're absolutely right, it is completely different.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good different. But I think it'll have to start in the younger years. What concerns me if we have MCAS in the younger, for the younger students and then Park for high school, if, let's say that was the decision, that would be such a dramatic change. I think if, if they were prepared, that the students were prepared their entire young lives to, to succeed in MCAS and all of a sudden they go to the high school and it's like, whoa, you know, I don't know how to do this. That's going to be, it's going to be kind of overwhelming.
And don't forget, MCAS is being phased out. So this freshman class will be the last group to do MCAS. Um, so it's certainly, it's, it's kind of, um, interesting for those of us that are, were around at the onset of the MCAS. We're, we're really changing our instruction, uh, similar to how we had to change it back then. And, uh, there's a lot of work that's going to come down, obviously, in the next few years to make sure that we're ready. Um, right now, obviously, it is, it's, we're being held harmless, so to speak, as we move forward. But there's a lot of work to do from a curriculum standpoint. And a lot of these standards have been given to the staff just this year. So certainly, I think, um, when I think back, you know, quite, quite a few years when we started the MCAS, the students had the same concerns when we started the MCAS. And now, you know, here we are, however many, number of years later, with the same issues with the Park tests.
That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Mrs. View again?
I just need to piggyback on what Nicole was saying though, that, are we penalizing the kids going into this year? So ninth and eleventh, so say that you choose ninth and eleventh. And as a district, we haven't given... I so am. So we're going to roll out this test to maybe ninth and eleventh. Um, but from a school perspective and our educators, that we have not prepared them to prepare our, our kids to be able to take the test. And they are being, from what I understand, if they take Park and not MCAS, this is what's going into their record, is that...
They'll be doing both.
No, they, no, they'd still do both.
They will be doing both.
They, they, we have no choice as far as MCAS. High school students will continue to take MCAS for graduation.
In grade ten?
From 2018, the class of 2018.
Freshman class.
So the incoming freshman class all the way through will take...
So let's just talk about the 10th graders that are going into 11th grade next year. They're going to be taking the MCAS and Park.
They will have taken the MCAS in grade ten.
Oh, in 10th. And then they're going to be taking Park in 11th.
If, if that's, if that is what's chosen. But, and I let Mr. Palladino speak, but one of the thoughts was at least give high school students an opportunity to see the level of rigor that is expected.
But it's not going to count against their record because they'll still have the MCAS as part of their record.
Correct. It's not high stakes in the fact that, you know, this is, you have to pass this to graduate. But what it can do as well is it can provide credits. There is, um, kind of what we used to have traditionally as an articulation agreement, say in Algebra II, uh, if they score a certain score, they can attain college credits as well. So it's, there's more to it. And obviously, from a curriculum standpoint, this can push our curriculum forward as well. And obviously, there's some accountability on, on all ends.
And I, I appreciate that and I appreciate the fact that, um, that this is a standard that, um, hopefully will be seen as a positive because it is raising the level of, um, of instruction that will then ultimately translate into college. It is just making sure that our kids, that our kids aren't being penalized because we're just not there yet to teach them at the level that they need to to actually get, you know, good grades on the Park.
And I don't think it's unique to Wareham High School. I think everyone's in the same boat. But this, in, in my mind, is going to push the rigor, is going to push the instruction, is going to move us forward into the 21st century. We're assessing not in paper and Scantrons, online, on a computer. So it's just, and obviously, the instruction, we could talk for hours about where that's going to go.
And I understand it's not our choice, just making sure that we're smarter, we're better than any other district out there when it comes to doing what's right in the best interest of our kids.
Absolutely.
And I think to speak to both your question, Rhonda, and to the previous comments about being prepared all the way through, our emphasis for the past two years, really three years, has been in introducing these standards and getting the programs and the instruction aligned at the elementary level and then middle on the new standards. So the, as far as programs they're using, as far as professional development and training teachers have had, that's where the emphasis has been, is moving up in, beginning at the beginning, so to speak, and moving up through the grade levels. And it's, it is a huge shift for many of our teachers because it is a very different way of teaching, the focus on informational text in reading and literature, the rigor of mathematics required at the lower grades. And so that training has actually preceded some of the training at the high school.
I want to give everybody a chance to just chime in. So can we have a question from someone else? Yes, Mr. Flaherty.
Um, just, you sort of touched on it, but do we have a sense of what the surrounding neighboring districts are leaning toward for their high school?
I am going to a meeting on Friday and I will be hearing from the other districts as to what they're deciding. The monthly meetings in May did not address this particular question. They've been dealing with a couple of other mandates that have come from the department.
All right, and, and again, just so I understand, these kids will be taking both tests, the, the MCAS and the Park?
Not in the same year, not in the same year.
Not in the same year, not in the same year. I was going to say, God, this whole day. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Uh, Mr. Lazarus?
First of all, I am fed up with the test. I'm absolutely fed up with them. This is bordering on ridiculous.
No, it is ridiculous. It's not bordering on it at all.
I can accept that. In the information that you gave us concerning grade eleven and that some of these courses, they'll qualify students to take credit bearing courses in state colleges, is, are you recommending that all grade eleven students and all grade nine students take this test? Or are you going to pick and choose based on some sort of performance level within their class?
We certainly, um, have some more work to do. We, we want to get the ball rolling, but we want to make sure. It's very calculated with, as we move forward. So, um, you know, there's still some work to be done back at the high school in regards to working with department heads and making sure we're making decisions that are best for our students. So we've got a little, a little bit more to do on that end. Uh, certainly don't feel comfortable saying it's going to be one, not the other. It's going to be both. Uh, certainly, uh, at the next meeting, we'd be able to tell you where we're at as far as our recommendation. And certainly, I want to work with the superintendent and, and curriculum director and so on and so forth.
Mr. Swat?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, no, you had another question? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I thought you were done, there was a pause.
I'm just a little slow, that's all. From your standpoint at the high school specifically, because it appears as though, uh, you want to go forward with this for grades three through eight, specifically at the high school because we have grade 10 where they've got to pass that or they don't graduate, is this something that we want to do? Or is the, is the jury still out on that?
I mean, my feeling is I, I want to be ahead of the curve. And, um, you know, I think we've had a few projects where we've been ahead of the curve and it's put us in a good situation for our students. So, you know, that's where I'm at. Let's, let's get ahead of the curve on the curriculum end, on the professional development end, and make sure our students are ready, you know, for college. There's some interesting stats, uh, as far as, uh, students and, um, attaining a college diploma in five years. And, um, we, we've seen the, the statistics there. And I, I want to make sure that our kids, uh, if they choose to have the skills, uh, all of the graduates have the skills to be successful in college. So I want to be ahead of the curve.
Is the test voluntary for the students? Or are we telling them they've got to do it?
It's, it's going to have, it's all or none.
Okay.
Is that it, Mr. Lazarus?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, no, Mr. Swat's next.
I guess mostly comments. One is, from my perspective, and it's certainly different than yours as an educator, but from my perspective, if Park is what it appears to be, which is a test of the ability of the test taker to critically think as compared to, um, spew back knowledge, it is the greatest challenge to educators that I've heard of in decades.
Correct.
On the other hand, I think it's a challenge that we should accept. And I hope every educator does. But I also hope every teacher's college and university who are educating educators accepts the fact that they have a challenge too. And I hope they accept that challenge because if people are, if they're churning out teachers who are not prepared to create successful students to, to be able to actually teach teachers to teach how to critically think, then shame on them.
Right.
Uh, so there's a, there's a huge implications associated with this.
Right.
But having said all that, I could, in the age of Google or Bing or whatever you use, employers want people who can think, knowledge is readily available. How many of us have been to parties where they say, well, you know, what, what's the answer to this question? Nobody pauses before they take out their smartphone to get the answer to any question of knowledge.
Right.
So that's a trivial matter now. But being able to use knowledge is not trivial. The sooner we get our students realizing that that's what's valuable, the better off we are. So I respect the recommendation of the superintendent. But my guess is it's a recommendation that's more technology resource driven than it is reticence about exposing third graders to Park. And I accept that recommendation. But I say the sooner we can expose students to what colleges and then employers are going to want, the better off we are. Especially if we are, quote, held harmless by this, I won't go any further on that.
Just for a while, we're held harmless.
Yeah, we're held harmless for a while.
Right.
Yes, there's, quote, too much testing. But testing actually can be, if it's a good test, an educational experience as well.
Right.
So while I greatly appreciate Nicole's comments about it, my guess is that she would get that much greater satisfaction out of doing well on Park than she got out of her mastery of MCAS.
Right.
Because it is more difficult. And finally, the final comment I'll make is it just royals me that kids come out of our high school thinking they know math, for example, and then end up taking a no-credit remedial and get charged for a math course in college. That has to end. And the sooner we can end that, and my sense is, it, this almost has the ability to bike pass Accuplacer, which is to say, if you do well on 11th grade Park, you don't have to take Accuplacer because you've proven your ability to do college work.
Correct.
And I say, great.
Right.
Because I, I know seniors today who just got back their Accuplacer and the only thing that concerned them was, oh, thank God, I don't have to take remedial math. So I say the sooner we give them the opportunity to prove their competency. But, all right, the penultimate comment, the ultimate comment, we must, which is Nicole's point, we must align our instruction and our curriculum so that they have a chance of being successful. And if we don't do that, shame on us.
Right, and, and it goes back to that PD account you were talking about just a little while ago. You know, we've got to, we've got to have the funding to make sure we can do the work in the summertime to align the curriculum to be ready to instruct in September.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Flaherty?
Yeah. As, as been mentioned repeatedly that we've been preparing for this, I guess we're going on three years now. And I remember all these discussions and, you know, this is why we needed new textbooks and this is why we have to, this is why we needed an override for new textbooks, uh, because we need to meet the Common Core standards and we, everything, everything surrounding that. And I guess, I guess the question I have is, are we aligned completely? And if we're not, how much more money is that going to cost?
In answer to that, you're right. Uh, the town meeting last June, June of 2013 approved the override for textbooks. That was...
Well, there was, it wasn't an override, it was a...
Or it was a...
Budgetary.
It was a loan.
An article.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Bond.
It's important.
A warrant. And you're absolutely right, it is important. The warrant that was approved last June provided funds for technology which enabled us to have the infrastructure to even do the Park pilot this year at the high school. Uh, that same warrant enabled us to purchase math textbooks aligned with the Common Core state standards for all high school students, grades nine through 11, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II and Precalculus. Then because of that purchase, uh, we were able to negotiate with Glencoe, uh, one of the major publishers, to provide a free pilot for seventh and eighth grade students in the middle school because we had aligned Curriculum K through six in mathematics. And so our middle school seventh and eighth grade teachers have benefited from that free pilot and have used that curriculum, which is both digital and paper. Uh, and all of the new curriculums, you purchase the license and the textbooks are free. So that's how we proceeded. And the middle school with grant funds and other means have already discussed with the new principal and with the superintendent to then go ahead with the math program. So math, as of this year, has been brought with the resources in place and the PD has begun with the teachers because it is a different way of teaching. Because they're not only learning to teach math facts, but to teach thinking and to use online tools and online instruction, which is, uh, which is something new for many of our teachers. At the elementary level, we began two years ago with a pilot of the National Geographic Reach for Reading Program, which is a comprehensive reading and literacy program that integrates not just literature, but informational texts, science and social studies. That was voted to be approved with the warrant and with other grant funds. Reach for Reading has been implemented in grades K through four. Grade five had a pilot this year and they are looking to expand that pilot. So the materials are in place. Um, more materials need to be purchased. I don't have a figure off the top of my head. The training has been ongoing and it needs to be ongoing because I can't overemphasize the challenge to our teachers for a real mind shift. I mean, we, you know, we go say paradigm shift all the time, but a true shift in instruction. It's letting go of teaching and becoming that educational coach so that the students are doing the investigations and the students are doing the thinking. And that is a different way of teaching.
You may, you may have said it, I might not have heard it. So at the high school specifically, are we prepared 100%?
I don't think we're ever 100%, but we're, we're moving forward. We still have some work to do.
90%?
No.
80%?
I would, I would say we're about 75% of the way there.
75%.
But we're moving forward and we'll be even closer in September.
How much, how much will it cost to get to 95%?
I mean, I hate to throw arbitrary numbers out there, but, um, I, I would think, you know, it's, it's all curriculum rate and it depends how big the committees are. I mean, there's a lot of, uh...
All right, you, you don't, you don't need a vote tonight, do you?
We do.
You do?
I mean, I, I would, I would say probably close to $20,000 is, is a rough estimate.
$20,000 to be 95% prepared.
Correct. That's, that's my ballpark figure.
That, that's a lot lower than I had thought.
Well, we, we like to keep the committees fairly small. We feel it's more productive when you keep them smaller.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, I guess you save the best for last, huh? My annoyance with the whole program is, um, that, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure how much time this is going to consume. If in fact you choose to do it grade nine to 11, how many days of testing is that going to be?
What, what we had hoped is if you, I, I believe you have a slide that has the, kind of the timeframes. We had hoped that we'd try and combine these with some MCAS testing days so that, uh, you know, instead of, um, you know, affecting 25% of the school, maybe it's closer to 50 or above 50. Um, it, it gets tricky as, as you know, better than anyone.
I know, but...
I know, but-
It, it's tricky with the coverage, with the accommodations that need to, you know, and all that.
My problem with, my problem with it, and why it's bordering the ridiculous, is because it seems like all we're doing now is testing. I mean, it's, it just seems that every time you turn around, our kids are taking a test. They're taking the PSATs, they're taking the SATs, they're taking the Park, they're taking the MCAS, and it's almost like a test mania. And, and I just think, you know, and I'm not saying I'm against high-stakes testing, but I'm, I'm against just absolutely clobbering our kids with tests.
Right.
And our staff. And then every time you turn around, the smoke settles on an initiative, and we're throwing another initiative at our professional staff. And we want to ask ourselves why our professional staff is not jumping around, being happy-go-lucky all the time because they're getting clobbered. It's, it's a prescription to fail. Quite honestly, that's my idea on it. It's a prescription to fail. These professional staff members don't have a chance. You're talking about a complete shift in the way they instruct their students, a complete shift, K through 12.
Right.
And we're doing this to them, and we're not going to be able, both financially, time-wise, and with the expertise out there that they're going to get in terms of hiring consultants or whatever, the expertise to make them competent in this new paradigm. Because it is all different, and it's all new. Trust me, I'm there, I know what I'm talking about. So that's why I'm frustrated with it. I'm frustrated with it because the kids are being tested to death, and I'm frustrated with it because our professional staff don't stand a chance. It's, it's a prescription for failure.
And, and that's why I want to get ahead of it while it doesn't count.
But with that being said, we've got to vote for it.
Right.
We've got to take your recommendation and vote for it, you know? And as much as it bothers me, and to do the best we can to train our staff to approach this. Because, you know, let's face it, I've done a little research on the Park too, as I've taught my classes. All right, I'm going to tell you something right now. One thing I like about the Park is authentic assessment, it's performance-based, and that provides the opportunity for our kids to think at higher levels. It's not so much, like Jeff said, the knowledge acquisition, it's using that knowledge in constructive ways, in different ways. That I like. But what I am going to tell you about the Park, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, it's a more culturally biased test.
Really?
That, that has been stated.
It's a more culturally biased test. That bothers me. Because a lot of it is based on the experiences that the kids go into that test with.
Right.
Now, there's not, there's not a thing that Dr. Cliff Sylvia can do about that.
Right.
But it bothers me. So with that being said, I have to support it. I have to vote for your recommendation. But you know what? It's not without jumping and screaming and saying, you know, we, we really, really don't have the capacity to really give our kids every break that they need and to train our teachers in the best possible way. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just sad that it's come to this. And the other thing that I want to say is, even though we have aligned our standards, there's a big difference between standards and evaluation. Big difference. In how we evaluate those standards and the acquisition of those standards and the application of those standards is a whole different ball of wax.
Correct.
And I don't know how we provide training for that. Okay? So what I'm saying is, when they do their in-class assessments, when they're doing their, their interim assessments and their summative assessments or the course-ending assessments or whatever you want to call it-
Experiments, yes.
You've got to patent those assessments, and you've got to drive it home to your teachers, they've got to patent those assessments on performance-based assessments, performance-based acquisition.
Yes.
So, because if they don't do that on a regular basis, our kids are going to be lost. They're going to be lost in the shuffle.
You're right.
So, but I have to support it. But I, I, I had to get it off my chest. That's what bothers me about this, that our kids are being tested to death. With that being said, I want to entertain a recommendation for, the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Anything further to be said? Mr. Swett?
I just want to hear the superintendent's rationale behind the 3 through 8 recommendation.
For several reasons. The first reason would be we're not ready with our technology. That's one of our main reasons.
But it can be paper.
It could be, but we're still not, we do not feel like we're prepared to support that. The second reason, we feel like if we can have the high school that is, we will have them prepared with the technology, they have taken the practice, we can do some work during the summer with our teachers, we will have an insight to 3 through 8 on how we should be looking at preparing our teachers to prepare our students. So we feel like if we can wait one more year with our grades 3 through 8, it gives us a little bit more time to prepare, it gives us, it gives us an insight on what's coming. And then when we all have to move, when the state says, then we will have that, we'll be ready to move.
I, I forgot one other question, if I can ask it. I can, hell, we've got discussion. The other test I forgot to mention was the AP test, because everybody takes an AP test. Is this going to eliminate the AP program? Is there going to be able to get college credit?
No one knows at this point, in all honesty. All we know is that Park is saying it will be accepted for college credit in state colleges. That's all we know.
Any other discussion? Yes, Superintendent.
This is not a final vote.
No, it isn't. It's an October, right?
That's correct. This is just a placeholder for us to say, here's what we're doing. And a question was asked earlier about what the other superintendents or the other districts around, and this has been a real discussion with the various superintendents on our listserv. And it's mixed. It's mixed.
Could you clarify and/or, the Park in grades 9 and/or 11, is the motion really going to be and/or?
Right now, we're going to say we are doing all in grades 9 and 11. That is our placeholder. I, there's a lot of work that's going to go on this summer at the high school before we make our final decision.
Understood. So for the motion purposes, we should delete slash or?
That, that would be correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. All in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? 5-0-0. Next order of business, superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rotella. Thank you, Mr. Palladino.
Very briefly, scholarship night is tomorrow night. It begins at-
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. Please come, help us celebrate. And we're also very grateful to all the various committees, the various donors, to support our students as they move forward.
Do we have a grand total?
Scott, do we have a grand total yet?
Over $40,000.
It's incredible. So lucky. Graduation will be on Friday night because the weather is going to be good outside. Knock on wood, everyone.
And I'll bring the off.
We also have portfolio night at the middle school. We have the sharing of information. It will be at, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and that's tomorrow night at 5:30. I will be there, happy to share any information regarding our budget, regarding the override, and how that impacts us schools. And we had, tonight, we had the co-op graduation. It was wonderful, and congratulations to all the students from the co-op who gradu- graduated. Job well done.
School committee reports? No one has any reports, okay. Any other business from the committee? I have just a couple of pieces. I just, I just want to remind the committee, if they have agenda items that they want me to consider for the agenda, please get, get to me so I can make sure that I can get it to Michelle in a timely manner. And the second thing is, I just want to remind you that our next meeting, the superintendent has, well, and her leadership team, has kind of changed the format for the school improvement plans, and she's going to try to get through them all in one night. And that will be-
Oh, boy.
And, well, you know, I'm taking her at her word. And that's going to be at our next meeting, the school improvement plans. And the other thing too is, I talked to the superintendent, and there will be, there'll be another agenda item on the food services that evolves. So just a couple of items for the next agenda. Any other, any other business at this time?
Just a quick question. Nicole, how long are you with us for the meetings? All the way through? It's a two-year stint, right?
I believe so, yes.
I, I- I just wanted to make sure this wasn't our last meeting, so-
No, she did great. You did great.
Yeah.
You really did, Nicole. We're very proud of you.
It's a two-year or more, so, exciting.
If there is no other business, I want to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.